Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority. It's September 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We're here in the Council Chambers, which is the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, here in the amazing city of Yukon, Oklahoma. We'll start with our invocation, Mark Borseth from Resurrection Lutheran, followed by the Flag Salute. If you please stand.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this city and we thank you for the blessing that this city, this community is to many, and we pray that you would continue to guide us and provide so that the city can just grow in our ability to be a blessing to all who live here, all who shop here, all who spend time here. And thank you for those who are serving as mayor, as city council, as city staff, city employees. We just pray blessings upon them as they work together, as they serve the community. Bless them and their families and their health and their relationships. And we just ask that you would guide our city leaders, our city servants, as they seek to provide leadership and service. And we thank you for just all the creativity, the energy, the work that gets put in. And we just pray for blessings and guidance upon this meeting tonight, and that you would guide us both in the short term and the long term, to be a healthy and strong city. We thank you, God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mark. Okay, roll call.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Gilliland.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to call forward Jason Orr, the President of City Managers Association of Oklahoma, CMAO, and let him do a presentation to our amazing city manager.
Sure. Would you like for me to stand here at the podium or do we need to come up?
Why don't you come up? Can we get him a microphone, please? And just come stand and face the audience and Tammy?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Jason Orr. I'm the current president of the City Management Association of Oklahoma, and I'm here tonight to present the Gerald Wilkins Award. This is an annual award. It's given out to a city manager who is credited with strengthening the city management form of government through their stable length of service to cities, their dedication to civic activities, their participation and contribution to City Management Association of Oklahoma, and also, one of the most important things, their dedication and commitment to our code of ethics. This year, we had three nominations. Other than Tammy, we had Elizabeth Gray from the city of Bethany. Also, we had Gerald Gilbert from the city of Enid. So you guys know already all these wonderful things about Tammy, but I'm going to go through some of this stuff. Tammy has served with the city of Yukon since 1996, before being appointed city manager in 2021. During her tenure, she has had a navigated community where at times there's been a little bit of distrust in government, especially with financial nightmare just a couple of short years ago. However, Tammy has been able to rebuild that trust with the community. She has done so with respect and grace. She is also the 2017 recipient of the Dawn Rider Award, and that goes to outstanding individuals who have made significant contributions to their community and to their profession. Her involvement in the community, and also, her example of leadership to people like me and the City Management Association of Oklahoma, is what is leading us to recognize her tonight. So, on behalf of CMAO, it is my honor, my pleasure to be here to present the Gerald Wilkins Award to Ms. Tammy Kretschmer.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Wait, one more.
Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three.
I want a copy of that one. Do not put that one in the paper. Tammy, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Okay. Who has the microphone?
I would like to thank the CMAO for their support and for this award. When I received the call from Dave Schlesky, I had, unfortunately, I couldn't attend the conference this summer because I had COVID. And he left me speechless when he told me that I had won. Never in a million years did I think that I would get this award, and it, I'm humbled. It's a great honor, and I will do my utmost best to keep the respect and ethics as I see fit. My, I believe my morals and my ethics have proven that, and they will continue to be the same. But I'd also like to thank the city council for their continued support, for having faith in me and giving me the opportunity to be the city manager here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We appreciate it.
Someone send me one of those pictures.
I know you want the one with me in it, don't you?
Yeah. I was told by our executive director, bring one back.
Okay, we'll send you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. All right. At this time, it's our time for visitors. We have several visitors. Let me remind you, it's limited to three minutes, and the city council cannot comment on that because it's not on our agenda. We will start with Mike Burris. If you'll come forward. State your name, your address.
My name's Mike Burris. I live at 300 East Platt Drive. I've lived there for about 28 years. I lived in Yukon, actually on Platt Drive, for about 40 years. I'm here today because we now have an Airbnb behind us. We got a noise issue. We got a parking issue. We got lights. We got late hours, and they are not, they don't follow a pattern. It seems to be two, three, four times a week, and we have to deal with that. And then, we, in the past, when we have called the police, the issue is, is we're not getting people to come out, tell them to stop, and then they stop. Last time, they tortured us for a while because they were flipping the lights on and off, flipping the music on and off. What we're going to need, it's my understanding, we're going to end up with this ordinance no matter what. If we do end up with this ordinance, what I'm hoping that we'll do is get some vehicle for addressing these issues. If we can get the police department to respond, I know this is kind of a code enforcement thing, but if we can get the police department to respond and come out and take a look at this stuff, and report back and let you all know what's going on, nobody's going to want to live next door to this stuff. The other issue is, is that if, I've been told that Yukon has an ordinance right now that will, that allows them to say, no, we don't want an Airbnb in our residential areas. If that's the case, really what we need to do is enforce it. I don't like to read to people. Now I'm going to read to you. It says, "As far as general description of residential areas, a single-family residential district is designed to provide quiet, low-density areas for single-family living with related recreational, religious, and educational facilities protected from all commercial and industrial activity." Everybody that we've talked to has said that this is a commercial activity. They're trying to put it in the middle of our district, I mean, of our residential district. Pretty much, well, I haven't found one person who has said, "I'm interested in a house right next door to an Airbnb." This is lowering our property values. I know, Mayor, you live in Parkland, too. I'm sure you don't want your property value to go down, but if we start packing the Parkland Two with Airbnbs, that's what's going to happen to us. So we've got to figure out a way to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Mrs. Burris, Susan. State your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Susan Burris, and I live at 300 East Platt Drive. That's actually a house behind and one to the east of the Airbnb. I'd just like to make a couple of points that may be of interest to the council. The first one has to do with numbers. I think there, in my count right now, there's seven residents. There's some on our street and two houses to the east that far down. On, people behind us, and there's another one to the west, there's seven residents that I know of that have been negatively impacted by the disturbances of the Airbnb, by the noise, the lights, parking, and the late hours. And there's probably more, given that on one particular night, Linda, and she lives at 301 East Mead Drive, that's next door to the Airbnb, counted 23 cars on her street. So I'm guessing there's probably more than seven residents who are affected by this. And I think my husband gave Mr. Horton a video of the lights and the noise. And in addition, I'd like to request that the council check the police logs to verify how many calls and complaints have been made to this Airbnb. And it is my understanding, too, that this Airbnb does not pay sales tax. They charge it, but they don't pay you for it. So you're having your police come out, ambulance come out, and there's no money for that. They haven't submitted their money. My husband and I went to a meeting in the village in, like, the 1st of August. They have an ordinance, and they have a license. Even with these things, they were having this meeting to, still, they're still having issues. They were having this meeting to add to their ordinance. They're still having problems with glaring lights, parking, noise into the morning hours. I would just like to ask the council to think about what we present tonight. I would also ask you to enforce the ordinance that's in place right now, which is not to have Airbnbs. And anything we can do to help with that, we would like to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burris. Otis Davenport. State your name and your address.
My name is Otis Davenport, and I live at 236 East Platt Drive in Parkland, too. And I just wanted to bring up that this Airbnb just popped up kind of overnight, and we didn't even realize, I, as a bachelor, didn't realize it was Airbnb. I just thought it was a multi-task family that moved in, and that they were just having weekend parties there, but it turned out to be an Airbnb. The one thing I'd like to see is, if they are going to pop these things up to give somebody some notice, and if they're going to give us some notice, and the city's wanting tax money and things like that, that we should be getting some license for these people to pop up Airbnb overnight. We should be able to draw taxes off that Airbnb. We should be able to regulate that Airbnb. And if we can't do that, then, I've already been unofficially told that they're already here, and they're here to stay, so we're not going to be able to get rid of them, so we might as well learn to live with them. But if we're going to learn to live with them, we need to regulate it. So personally, I myself have seen grown adults jump off the roof of this house into the swimming pool. I have personally seen the traffic in the streets. I have personally seen the lights up and down the street for four to five, six houses in each direction. And just a couple of weeks ago, they had the IMSA and the police and the fire over for an infant that almost drowned in the swimming pool in the backyard because of, the parents were inattivated and wasn't paying attention until the baby was floating in the water. So I don't think that we really need that kind of stuff going on in our neighborhood. This is, I've been a resident there for 25-plus years. It's been a nice, quiet little neighborhood, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Illich.
Thanks for letting us do this. I'm Doug Illich. I live next door to the Airbnb, 301 East Mead Drive. Police have been out there three times, once for people jumping off the roof, once for the lights and the music, and the last time was when the little two-year-old almost drowned. Now, I don't think this is, I've been in that house for 42 years, and I contacted my real estate lady, and she told me that it's not going to help the value of your home to have an Airbnb next to it. So I've got a couple of questions. One, who does my attorney contact whenever I sell out, or I die and my wife sells the place, to get the difference in what that house would be worth versus what it was worth? Now, this is not a, I mean, I have been told by someone that it's not legal for them to be there now. And if it's not legal, then they need to do something about it. That's my three minutes.
Thank you. Linda Illich.
Thank you for listening. My name's Linda Illich. I live at 301 East Mead. I've lived there for 42 years. I love the city of Yukon. It's a great place to live. But as you all know, we have an Airbnb next to us. We put up with the Airbnb all summer. You know, night after night after night, there are parties going on at that house. They go home, the next night, someone else comes in. One night, they threw trash in the yard. I walked outside to pick up the trash. There were 19 cars out in the street. There were four in the driveway. This lady, young lady, gets out of her car, and she said, "Do you have a problem with us?" She said, "You don't like our color, do you?" And I said, "Listen, I have nothing, I'm out here counting cars and picking up trash that someone threw in my yard." She went into the house, out comes three large guys over into my yard, asking, "What is your problem with us?" I said, "I don't have a problem with you. I'm out counting cars." I said, "But I know you're here for an Airbnb. I know you're here for a party." You'll go in the backyard, you'll turn your music up, you'll say all kinds of language, you'll throw your marijuana butts into our yard. I said, "You'll have your party till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. You'll go home, you'll go out into the streets, you'll slam your car doors going home." I said, "You guys go home." They come in and clean the house up. The next day, people will show up again and do the same thing." We put up with that all summer long. It's not fair. We have residents of Yukon. We deserve better than that. We pay our taxes. You know, if you guys want Airbnbs here, why don't you take the City Mills, which is a great place, turn it into one? Let people party downtown Yukon if you want the money. We don't, we didn't choose to live next to a hotel. We chose to live in a nice, quiet neighborhood, and it doesn't seem to matter to anyone anymore. The lady across, there's a lot of widows in my, in our area. The lady right across the street from the Airbnb, which doesn't want to show her face because she's afraid. I'm afraid to stand up here and talk because one of my best friends, their house was shot up here in Yukon. You all know the place probably. For no reason, their house was shot up. They think a drug deal went down bad, and the people got the wrong house. Well, I'm afraid that will happen to my house as well. You know, people are nasty anymore. But anyway, on the 4th of July, we were not home, but the lady across the street, she was getting out of her car, and the people at the Airbnb hollered across, "You don't mind if we shoot fireworks off tonight, do you?" And she said, "You can't, not here in Yukon." And they say, "Well, they're light. We're going to." They shot one over into her garage. It blew up. She runs into the house and shuts the door, and she's scared to death of them. She truly is. So I would beg you guys to do something about this.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you for listening. I appreciate all of you for doing your jobs. Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you that came to speak. Well, now recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th, 2022. Do you have a motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Item 2, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th, 2022; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $489,478.09; C) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal; D) executing an HVAC maintenance agreement between the city of Yukon and RB Akins Company for an annual maintenance agreement on the Liebert HVAC AC system at the EOC bunker at a cost of $5,500 to be paid from the 2022-2023 technology budget, department budget, as recommended by the Information Technology Director; E) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for September 20th, 2022, 7:00 PM, in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Item 2, Reports of Boards, Commission, and City Officials. Ms. Kretschmer, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Item 3, this is a discussion item only. It's a discussion regarding a pre-application to the Association of Central Oklahoman Government, ACOG, for funding for roadways and sidewalk improvements by Tammy Kretschmer and Robbie Williams. Want to tell us about that?
Yes, I would. There are several opportunities out there right now with ACOG. This Friday, there is a deadline to get our applications in. Robbie has some maps that he would like to show you. He will pass those out. There are several improvements that we would like to do on Garth Brooks. There's also some sidewalks that we would like to get installed on Yukon Parkway. There's also some sidewalks on Garth Brooks. Robbie's going to go into detail and tell you what each project is that we're going to apply for.
Okay. Generally, what I want to do is just kind of go over the schedule with you, and I'll, there's three different grant funds, and I'll explain them as we go through the projects. On August 10th, ACOG did the call for the projects, for the three different grants, and we've been meeting since that time. On this Friday, September 16th, the pre-application is due, and so that's why we're here tonight, to let you know what we would like to submit on. And then, after we do that, then we actually make our, then our final application is due October 31st. And that gives ACOG staff, after this Friday, to get back with us if they need any more information on our projects and things of that nature. So, once the submittals are made October 31st, the month of November and December, the ACOG staff will go through all the applications, and all these are done with points, and you get a number and things of that nature. And then, the ACOG Policy Committee and Board of Directors, they have a February 2023 date tentative to approve the projects for funding. So, the first project on the map is from, on Garth Brooks, from Vandeman to State Highway 66. And ACOG was given money through ODOT, and it's called the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And we're being told that this would be a $500,000 grant, and these projects need to be ready to be built. No environmental, things of that nature, something that we can get done, get out on the streets. So this mile, we've, we want to repair the road, crack seal it, repair the base, do a mill, inlay new asphalt, and do striping. So that's what we want to do on this project. The next one is, the next two I'm going to go over are Transportation Alternative Program Grants, and they're basically for multimodal sidewalks, trails. So one of them we want to do is along Yukon Parkway, from the Stone Mill Commercial area, going north, along Yukon Parkway and crossing the railroad tracks in Ranchwood and tying at Legacy Lakes. And this puts the trail in front of the high school. The second one, which is the third, we're on the third map, is basically getting a 10-foot wide multimodal trail across I-40, under I-40.
Under it.
Right. And that can be done with also adding additional lanes. We've checked all that out and done that. The next three projects are the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. And basically, these are projects we're submitting for physical year 2025 funding. So these would be down the road. And if you remember, in 2016, we did the Garth Brooks Corridor Study. We came up with 13 priorities. And then again, earlier this year, we updated the Garth Brooks Boulevard Corridor Study. So these are, these projects are from all that work. And so, and, so these are in no order, but the first one is Garth Brooks from I-40 westbound on-ramp to Vandeman Avenue. We would add a fifth lane and also include a 10-foot wide multimodal trail. The next one is the same thing on Northwest 10th Street to Health Center Parkway, is to add a middle fifth lane there. And that one's fairly, I don't, nothing's simple, but there's enough paving there to where we can do the restriping to get the fifth lane, but as we get towards Health Center Parkway, we do need to widen the pavement. And again, we would install a 10-foot wide multimodal trail with this project. And then the last one is adding a southbound, a southbound lane on Garth Brooks from the I-40 westbound on-ramp going south to Health Center Parkway. So that's what I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm very excited that we're applying for all these, and it looks like we have a good chance this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that was for information only. So we'll move on to item 4, Consider Approving the Purchase of Emergency Lighting, Emergency Sirens, and Graphics for Three 2022 Chevy Police Vehicles Using State Contract Number SW0142 and SW0140 at a Cost of $39,474.07, as approved in the 2022-2023 Capital Improvement Budgets, as recommended by the Police Chief. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Will this be using any Yukon businesses to, to put all this on there?
Yes, sir. So out of
Yes, sir. So Auto, Auto Effects is on the state contract. They're a local business and this would be utilizing uh, all the equipment they can order and apply to these vehicles.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, number five. Consider a motion to reject two bids for the Jackie Cooper Gymnasium Exterior Rehabilitation Project from T S, TCS Construction LLC and Downey Contracting LLC due to errors within both bids and rebid the project as recommended by the city engineer. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I looked in the, in the agenda and the company document. I didn't see what the mistake might be. Could we learn what that, what that was?
Uh, we, we had two bids and we have thirteen bid items. And so they're responsible to, to, we, we provide a form and they're responsible to write in, uh, their unit prices. You know, like so, how much a foot? And, uh, the, the first bidder, he had like five items that were just wrong and it just made the total, um, it was just, it was just wrong. And then the second bidder, they had one item that was not done correctly. And so with the recommendation from the city attorney, we're reject, we would like to reject the bids and rebid it.
And they wouldn't be disqualified from?
No, they, they, they can rebid again. Yes.
Were there only two that bid on it?
There was only two that bid on it. I know of a third and so I believe if we rebid it, they, they would bid it as well.
All right, thank you. Okay. Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Right. Item number six. Consider approving the purchase of a North Signal Light replacement at Garth Brooks Boulevard in Vandeman from Signal Tech in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to be purchased using our maintenance agreement contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item seven. Consider a motion to approve or amend and approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-one and ordinance amending section seventy-four dash ninety-eight of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, dealing with powers of mayor during state of emergency and declaring emergency. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion on this that um, any emergency proclamation in accordance to this chapter be placed on agenda for emergency city council meeting, uh, for the council to review at the earliest allowable time by law. So then the council can review, modify, end, or extend the proclamation.
Any discussion on that? There's not a timeline?
Could you read, just read that one more time?
Sure. Um, any emergency proclamation in accordance with this chapter shall be placed on the agenda for emergency city council meeting to be scheduled for review from the city council at the earliest allowable time by law for the council to review, modify, end, or extend any proclamation.
But no set timeline?
Earliest.
Right. But no timeline like twenty-four hours or within forty-eight hours? As earliest as we could get a quorum together.
The earliest that we could set the meeting by law, which is?
We can set a meeting, but if we can get the people there. We saw that last week. I feel like putting a timeline on it is dangerous. And I like as early as, soon as earliest because if we're in a true emergency, like a tornado, it may take a few days to find you all. Or if you're out of state and we saw, you know, how easily, if several of us are gone, how that, that's why we're meeting tonight. So, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, we still don't have a second for that motion.
All second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item seven. Consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen thirty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item eight. Consider a motion to approve the purchase of emergency lighting and emergency sirens for the new fire department Tahoe in the amount of five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents to be paid to FX Technology using state contract S W oh one four two dash vehicle mounted equipment out of the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three Fire Department Capital Improvements Budget as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item nine. Consider a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to accept bids for the DRC Partition Wall as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item ten. Consider a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to accept proposals for the disc golf course at Welch Park as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
That would be nice.
I would like to point out the money's not coming from the city.
Absolutely.
It's donated through the Yukon Community Support Foundation, twenty-two thousand dollars, and we are very excited.
It's gonna be great.
Somebody is on the same wavelength I am because I talked to somebody a while back about disc golf. I'm not a disc golfer, but that's the park I was thinking of because I coach people who have grown up here and they don't even know that park's back there.
Yeah. I agree, you know, yes, I've been here for thirty-seven years and didn't know until recently. Y'all told me about it. So, yes, I'm excited for you to move forward on that. All right, let's vote first, though.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item eleven. Consider a motion to accept or amend the recommendation of projects from the Yukon Capital Advisory Board. Earlier tonight, we heard, uh, all of those in our study session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I, I just, I want to point out that, um, and I don't have the figures right here in front of me, so I'm not gonna try to be real specific, but, um, there are certain things that just have to be done. The, the streets and the, and the, the pipes and the water to and from our homes. Um, and when you add up the possible bonds, total dollar amount and/or sales tax amount, once you do the things that have to be done, there isn't a whole lot left over. So the question sometimes is, well, why, why aren't we proposing this or why don't we propose that? Um, once we propose the things that just absolutely have to be done, we're very limited from that point. So just part of the conversation, I think, that we need to have with our fellow residents is, is that. That we've got to have roads to drive on and we've got to carry water to and from our businesses and homes, so. Um, but I do believe that we can set a vision that five years from now, we begin to see the progress that we make with some of these bonds and we can literally say, "Let's keep going" and do some really cool things that aren't so much in the ground that we literally don't see, but things that we do get to see, so. Uh, thanks to the, to, uh, the advisory board and our city manager for their leadership on, on this issue.
And thank you, Eric, for serving and representing us on this. I commend the group for looking at the surveys and listening to what the people said. And, you know, we ask you for your opinion for a reason and I think you guys really, um, looked at everything so objectively. And I, I'm very, I'm very impressed. I'm so excited if we move forward on this. Anybody else?
No, I just, I want to thank them for focusing on the needs. We've got, everybody's always got a list of needs and wants and I thought they focused on the, the have-tos very well. Um, only question I would have is, because I know there's, there are people on the back end going, "Well, what about more?"
Right.
Could we, could we put in the vision part of that? Say in ten years as we're paying this down, we can, we can start looking towards this at that point.
Well, what we would like to do is keep the fif- the mills at fifteen mills. Don't ever let that go away.
Right.
Uh, that way there would never be any new taxes, which is just exactly what the school has done. So we can add projects as we complete projects.
Right. Yeah, and I was, that's what I just wondered if, if on the end, these are what we're doing now, as we're able to start, here's our next starting point, just that way the public may see that.
Well, we have to be, we have to be specific. And when we do, um, have the election, there will be several propositions for each project.
Yes.
We have to be specific on what it is and, um, how much the, how much it's gonna cost and let them vote. Some of them, uh, as you could see from David's notes, there were four propositions in Bethany. Um, all four passed, so there may be some that pass and some that don't. But that, that'll have to be decided on by the people.
All right, I think I'm with you on that, that a, a long-term vision of what we are wants and our needs of where our money will go, I think will, the, the citizens could get behind that, see what direction we're, we're headed long-term. I think it'd be great.
Uh, there is one question that I, I, it's a pretty big question and I missed the very last advisory board meeting, so this may, and, and I don't recall it being discussed, uh, reviewing it, but the, the, a big question as far as, um, the third firehouse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, don't mean to put anybody on the spot and I, and I, and I meant to ask earlier this week and I, I didn't make the time. So, um, the id- the, the issue of do, do we need a another firehouse in, as far as numbers and its staffing, or do we need a, a change in location? So we could still maintain two firehouses with the possibility of, of course, keeping, um, the one in Old Town, but, but just moving that staff to a new location until we certainly need three firehouses.
Councilman Wooten and I already asked that question to our chief. Do you want to
Okay.
give the answer? No, I want him to, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. Go ahead. Because we had that same question.
Okay.
Well, if we currently move our staff from that one to that station, we kind of have the same issues. Because it's a, it's a matter of response times. Um, also our call volume, I think, I don't know if you guys, you see our run reports, we're up about twenty percent. We have been for the last year and a half. So we're dropping more and more calls. So we're, we're, we're running multiple calls at times. So if we shut down the station that's at Fifth Street down here at Fifth and Oak and move it out there, then it's kind of that same issue. I mean, that's a very busy station. So now we're responding from out there to here. Where our current problem is, is our response times. We meet all the NFPA standards except for we respond out to the Garth Brooks and Tenth and Garth Brooks and Vandeman area.
So even without a third firehouse, we may be in need of more staff and supplies anyway. If we've increased calls by twenty percent.
I mean, if we continue to grow, I, I, I see it kind of leveling off, but we have our call volumes more and it's
Good.
Is it more about location? It's more about location and the ability with the traffic?
It's more about that, you know, of our response times. Because especially if we have a, a two-engine response out in that area, then now we're coming, our second responding unit's coming from our, our, you know, our, our, uh, station number one over there and it's, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty long response for us, especially if you get into any type of traffic. And we all know that traffic's really picked up.
Okay, very good. I think that's a good, clear answer. We, so, I think this council has had to, um, deal with things that weren't proactive in the past, uh, and we're trying to play catch-up and this is one area where maybe we could get ahead, especially with the support of the people, so. All right, thank you.
Anything else? All right, let's vote.
Gilliland?
Uh, yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item twelve. Consider a motion to authorize the city manager to solicit proposals for services for proposed capital improvement projects needing design concepts and cost estimates. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Is there any new business tonight?
No new business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll start our council discussion. We'll start at this end with Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I want to thank our advisory board. Um, I also want to congratulate Tammy. Yukon's very fortunate to have you as our city manager and we thank you for your hard work and dedication. And then I'd also like to thank everyone for their prayers and support in the loss of my father. Um, my family and I were very honored that several staff members were able to attend this service. Thank you.
Councilman Wooten?
Nothing tonight. Nothing.
Oh, okay. Let's mark this down. Councilman Zimmerman?
I'm sorry to hear about your father. Just mental laugh.
Councilman Gilliland?
Uh, congratulations to Tammy. I, I think that, um, you've done a great job. I won't, I won't, uh, get bogged down in the details, but I appreciate the work that you've done and the communication and openness you've had with the council and the community and, um, it's, it's, it's been great and, uh, the award's well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Um, I have a few dates to remind you of. Cruising for the Cause is this Thursday from five P.M. to nine P.M. If you've never been, it's a great night. It's on Route sixty-six. It's totally free. You can come cruise up and down, look at all the old cars. And there's lots of food trucks, booths, and lots of opportunities. It's family time. Chisum Trail Festival will be Saturday, October fifteenth, at Molly Spencer Farms. You'll be marking that on your calendar. Um, and Donna, we are so sad for your loss. Great man. Um, I'd like to also, I'm getting ready to leave to go to Tulsa. We have OML Conference this week. Uh, and I'd also like to point out that our city has been nominated for four different awards. Um, we have City Manager of the Year, which Tammy already knows. We have our own. Did she leave? Cindy Shivers has been nominated for the Dawn Rider Award, which is an award for transparency in government. Donna Yonda has been awarded, woman of, has been nominated, not, we haven't won yet, for Woman of the Year. And I myself has been nominated for Mayor of the Year. And then we have been nominated the Innovation Award for our survey and our community conversations that we had. I thought that was really awesome. So we find out on Thursday night. And what I'd like to say, I hope I speak for the rest of you that are nominated, it was an honor to be nominated from our peers. Um, and so I just appreciate that and no matter what we win or lose, we're all winners here, all right? And I also would like to say I am leaving to go out of town, so to my husband, good night. I love you and don't forget to feed the dog. Uh, make the most of your tomorrow. Be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.